I'd like to give an invocation for the special call meeting July at 1:30 PM here. Anybody want to volunteer to give the prayer? I guess I'll do it, alright. I have many father, we thank for this day and thank you for all your blessings you bestowed upon us and please pray that you'll guide us through the decisions we make over the next few meetings here. In your name we pray, amen. Thank you. I call this July 8th, 1:30 PM special call meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor J. Max Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Williams, District 1.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Meyer, District 2.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District 3. I'm absent. Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District 4.
Present.
Quorum present.
Would you please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Opening remarks I have now. We're going to try to keep this as short as possible so you aren't here all afternoon. Are there any agenda announcements? Okay. Public comment, it's now time for public comment again on this agenda. Is anybody in the audience who wants to make a comment? Anybody giving you any forms?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have anything? Melissa? You don't make anything? Alright. Public comment is closed. Is there consent agenda?
None.
Okay. Any announcements from staff or anybody up here? Okay. Any reports or presentations?
None.
Okay. Any old business? Alright, new business. Marie?
Yes, Mayor and Council, you have an ordinance, 2013-07-11, approval of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Brookhaven, Georgia to fix and add velorem tax rate of the city of Brookhaven for the fiscal year 2013 and for other purposes. This is a first read, which does require no action at this time. However, you do need to at least discuss your proposed millage rate amount.
Alright, discussion.
Well, we've heard from our finance director and have gone over the figures now for some time and I appreciate all the work that Bonnie Klein's done on this and the time she's spent sharing it with us. As we know, there's still some, not completely unknowns, but some figures that are not completely firm and as we all know, not all of our revenues accrue to us the first year. The franchise fees and insurance fees are all done in arrears, so we have a slightly lower budget this year. I think it's been expressed that it's been our desire all along to try to keep taxes as low as possible. We're all taxpayers too and yet we want to be able to provide the kind of services that we promised our citizens, first and foremost being public safety. We're very close to standing up our police department and look with quite a bit of excitement as to when that day comes, but of course, that takes money as well. I'm going to suggest that we set the millage rate for this first year at 2.95, which I believe will cover the 5,400 of personal and real property taxes that we're counting on in the budget. That gives us a little bit of wiggle room and my hope is that we will end the year with a good solid reserve fund. I don't know about you, but I like to have a good solid rainy day fund in my own personal and business expenses and I'd like to see the city start having one as well. I'm optimistic that the numbers are going to continue to improve that Ms. Klein has presented to us and I have a lot of hope and optimism that we will continue even as early in the next budget discussions in the coming months to lower it even more. But for now, I think in order to be prudent, I would propose that we set it at 2.95.
Thank you Rebecca. I just want to thank council and staff. There's been a lot of work going into not just the millage rate, but the budget and making sure that we're being responsible. And Bonnie, you have been, I know you've been overwhelmed because you've been having to meet with us individually, you know, that's part of the job, but I appreciate it. We've asked you lots and lots of questions. You've gotten back to us with lots and lots of information and I thank you for the work you're doing. Again, council has been very diligent. I know down at City Hall, you know, I'll walk by and I'll see them meeting with, one of them meeting with Bonnie, one of them meeting with Marie, one of them wants to meet with me, we'll all, you know, we can't all meet together because of the rules, which we applaud the rules. But there's been a lot of work going into this and there are still a lot of moving parts that we don't know yet because the county has really yet to officially set its millage rate and we've heard the memo Jim mentioned about them shifting funds back into the police services line item, which they removed last summer back in July. So we don't even know what the unincorporated line items and the police line items will be yet. But when they come out either this week or next week and we get the host numbers, we'll have a better idea of what our revenue picture will be and how we can set our millage rate in the future. I like to note that the 3.35 millage rate cap, we've come in over a third of a mil under the millage rate cap. It's a point four, if that's the rate that we finally adopt of 2.95, that's a significant reduction from what the millage rate in our charter, the cap is. So with that, does anybody else have any comment about anything?
I'm in support of that. I think the 2.95 does a very, very good job in keeping us on a tight leash to make sure we keep a tight budget, covering the 5.4 mil we need. It's a 12% reduction below our allowed cap, which I think is good and it also allows us the opportunity to come back and revisit this.
I'd like to propose a lower rate. I think if we're talking about covering the 5.4, if we go to 2.85, that puts us right at 5.484 million, which covers our budgeted real and personal property tax. I have a real fear that government expands until taxes available and I'd like to keep a cap on it to the extent we can. Also, we've heard earlier several times that we believe that there's going to be additional revenue from the host tax in addition to what we're showing in our budget that is available for those additional expenses that come up in the later year. But you know, at this point, if we believe our budget is a fair and accurate representation of what we need to spend this year for the city, then I believe that we need to hold our millage rate at that budget amount, which is the 5.4 or a 2.85 mil property tax rate.
Any other comment about that?
Let me just see.
Rebecca, do you have any comment about that?
Well, I'm just looking at what those numbers mean. Okay, so a 2.85 is a projected 5.4 million of tax income. The 2.95 is 5.6 million, so that's a $200,000 swing.
Is it that much?
Yes. Yeah. It's a tenth of a.
Our total digest is about $2 billion and our one mil is equal to about $2 million. So it's 10ths is equal to 200,000. So 100,000.
Yeah, good.
A 2.9 brings us in at 5.5. Again, my only, I agree with you Jim, we ought to try to keep it as low as possible. My only intent would be to try to build up a reserve. Again, I'm optimistic that the economy's turning, that all of these indicators that we're seeing in our budget look good, but you know, I think the recent years have shown is that it can turn on a dime.
Well, we've also heard earlier though, I mean, going back to the host tax credit, we've heard that that could be as much as an additional 1.5 to 2 million dollars of revenue that's not included in that budget that has the 5.4. And that seems to be reasonably accurate based on information, preliminary information we've received from DeKalb County. So I don't know that we're completely shooting in the dark by assuming that the 3 million that we have budgeted for Homestead, or excuse me, 3.5 million that we have for host tax isn't going to go up by some amount. You know, that amount could be as much as 50% going from 3.5 to 5 million. You know, that's not quite a 50% increase in that revenue line item. So I think, you know, we do have some apparent running room with the numbers we've been presented and I'd like to take that into consideration when we set the millage rate.
Joe, do you have anything?
Bonnie, how assured are you on the assumptions of the host that we just heard?
I'm not receiving any questions, but we've seen internal documents on the host, but they can't respond to this. We still have history to hold.
Well, I'd be willing to go along with the 2.85. Again, this is the first read. The Board of Commissioners is actually meeting tomorrow morning and we might get some news from them possibly, although they're not setting their millage rate, right?
I have to be honest, I'm not opposed to a 2.85 because the original position I took is it's important to keep the pressure on to make sure we keep the tight budget.
Yeah, I think that's, we just stated from the beginning that, you know, we wanted, our goal was to come in under the cap.
Right.
And I think that's, you know, an important goal we've achieved here and.
You know, we've had the benefit of a growing year.
Right.
And based on construction I see in my neighborhood and elsewhere, I think next year is going to be that much stronger. So I think that at this point, we need to take advantage of that and just recognize that, you know, as Rebecca said, you know, plane could hit a tower, heaven forbid tomorrow, but the foreseeable future is that we are on an upswing, so let's stay tight.
Right.
Let's look at additional revenue and I take advantage of that rather than trying to set a higher millage rate at this point.
Exactly. You know, your point about leaving money laying around government's never a good idea. And that's kind of what my belief in life is too.
Yeah.
If the government has it, they'll spend it. So I think this is a response, either one to me would be responsible, you know, 2.85, 2.9, 2.95, I think is a responsible number, doesn't leave money laying around. And if there is money laying around, we'll figure out a way to do something with that that's not just spending it, so. Any more discussion?
Well, as you know, I had originally wanted to get down to at least 2.75, at least be on a parity with.
Go here 2.5.
With Dunwoody, but they set that after several years of operation, so I'm good with the 2.85.
Yeah, I mean, I think the important thing is that we're, that number reflects the revenue that we were forecasting in our original budget. So long as we have that covered, then what else, you know, any additional revenue that comes in, the anticipated increases can be available for reserves and other things later in the year.
Right. Any more discussion?
You know, I would just point out that DeKalb's unincorporated rate for this portion of the spending is at 4.96. So now I know that the.
Not yet, we don't know that yet.
Well, proposed.
They're proposing it.
And I'm well aware the host credit goes against at least a portion of that, but you know, for our business and commercial owners too, that 2.85 is actually a pretty good rate and you know, again, as you point out, it's a good bit below the cap, so I'm good with that.
So that's actually a half a mil below the cap, right? 3.5 and 15 is 15.
Yes.
That's a full half mil below the cap.
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Well, do we vote on this?
I think she needs to amend her motion.
Well, there's no motion. She just talked, it was a discussion.
I just wanted you.
A sense of the council.
Right, so that way tomorrow evening, when you do take action, you'll be taking action on a specific number.
So this may change overnight.
So we're going to sleep on this.
Alright.
But I think it's a good number.
Yeah, alright.
Okay, no actually. What we said we needed. The bottom line is it covers what we said we needed.
Right, okay. Any more discussion on this? Joe, I sort of interrupted you earlier, did you have everything you wanted to say?
Yes, now I'm done.
Sorry about that, thanks. Alright, next thing is number two, resolution.
Yes, this is Resolution 2013-06-07, consideration and approval of a resolution providing for the assessment of the annual cost of maintaining of parking facilities in established parking maintenance districts. If you will recall, we talked about this at a previous work session, two neighborhoods, one off of Donaldson and one off of Osborne, which has parking pads incorporated and part of the right of way. So we're asking for approval to continue operating and collecting the annual assessment as previously done by DeKalb County and Mr. Meehan with Public Works is here to make that presentation.
Thank you. Like Ms. Garrett said, this does affect two neighborhoods. Park Creek and Haven Ridge are the only two neighborhoods that this affects. And these neighborhoods were both established in the 1980s and at the time, DeKalb County allowed the parking pads for these homes. They don't have driveways and garages, they have parking pads to be included inside the public right of way and as part of the final plat of these neighborhoods, they established these parking maintenance districts to be able to assess those residents, those homeowners for the maintenance of those parking pads. Going back through, we've looked back and see how DeKalb has kept track of this. As far as we can tell, DeKalb has just put this money into their general fund, they don't have a separate accounting for it. Based on the number of homes in there, the fee that we're asking for, that DeKalb has been assessing them, is $12.50 parcel per year. With the number of homes in there, it comes to about a little over $1,000 per year in revenue, which would be to the city. So taken over the 25 or so years that these neighborhoods have been in existence, it's a grand total of the county, we've collected about 25,000 total from those neighborhoods over that period. Going back and looking at what work has been done though, Havenbrook neighborhood has had their streets repaved. We don't have an exact date, but it's been within the past five to 10 years. So the county did spend some, and they included repaving the parking pads at that time for that neighborhood. So they have spent some money on the Havenbrook neighborhood. As far as we can tell, no work, no paving or other than some maybe routine maintenance work has been done in the Park Creek neighborhood.
Alright. So this resolution doesn't have a different figure than what DeKalb County.
No, it's the same. The $12.50 per lot is the same fee that DeKalb collected last year.
Okay. We talked last time about trying to estimate a cost to pave or what, are you able to come up with some numbers?
I did a rough number and for each neighborhood, it's about, just a real rough cost of 13,000 to 15,000 dollars to repave the parking pads only. This does not include the road. The road would be out of our regular repaving fund, but each neighborhood is about probably 13,000 to 15,000 dollars based on the number of spaces we counted in there.
And we would anticipate those roads would be paved.
Park Creek, those roads, probably every 15, between 15 and 20 years, should be the normal life cycle for roads. They're very low, like they're cul-de-sac neighborhoods, very low volume traffic. If we do, when we do our repaving and do it right, you know, they should last quite a long time, so.
And you would repave the parking pads at the same time, I would think.
Repave or do some treatment on the parking pads to reestablish those, to extend the life of those parking pads, yes.
Alright, thank you.
Did you, were you able to go take a look, the one you said was, had been repaved in recent time was Havenbrook, what about Park Creek? Did you look at it? What kind of shape is it in?
The roads are in pretty bad shape. We have some of the preliminary data from the laser truck survey. The roads are in that neighborhood are in poor to marginal condition.
That's off of Donaldson.
That's the one off of Donaldson, yes. The parking pads, because they don't have the high volume of traffic, are probably in a little bit better shape, but it's still been, they've been there for, think of an asphalt driveway that you would have in a home for a home that's 30 years old that hasn't ever been repaved, so.
Do you have the report on the street assessment?
We have the preliminary data from IMS and so I look, just from that preliminary data we have, I look for the Park Creek and for Haven. It's for Park Creek, like I said, they came in as what we would classify as a poor to marginal level of condition.
When will we expect a report on all of them?
We're working towards, within the next couple of months as we go into the retreats and the budget cycle for next year.
So I guess my question is, what's a reasonable fee for the cost to pave these on a, you know, if you said it's, we're spending $15,000 each, 30,000 total every 15 years, should we expect to collect that or, you know, net zero? I'm not looking to make any money, but you know, net zero, what should our number be for a fee per lot?
Without getting into, you know, getting into more analysis on it, what we're collecting now is probably about the right level for now. We probably won't make money on it. We might, you know, like I said, if it costs, if the net is.
We don't want to make any money on it.
Right, we don't want to make any. But if the net, if we're talking about 25 to 30,000 dollars to resurface both of these neighborhoods, that's about 25 to 30 years worth of collections at this rate, taking inflation and all that stuff out of it. So and we're talking about resurfacing about every 20 years, you know, it maybe needed to be a little bit higher, but at this point, we don't have enough analysis to raise the fee.
But you did find that there's no money.
You're right, there's no.
So this is starting anew.
This is starting anew, so we'd be starting from zero because we're not getting any money from DeKalb for this.
Shocked.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright.
Do we.
Action on this?
Yes, please.
On the resolution?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 213-06-07, consideration and approval of a resolution providing for an assessment of annual cost maintaining parking facilities in established parking maintenance district with the addition that we will revisit this after we have completed our road analysis and see if these fees are sufficient to cover the costs of maintaining these parking pads going forward. So for this year, we'll leave it at the 1250. For next year, we'll establish, we'll revisit it based on what we believe the actual cost will be per the analysis.
Is there a second to Jim's motion as stated?
I second that. Thank you Jim.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the resolution as stated by Councilman Irsen, if I so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, please enter into the minutes that has passed. Number three, Resolution 2013-66.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, this is, I'm going to ask that you all defer this, but for the record, it is consideration and approval of a resolution providing for the establishment of the stormwater service fee rates and credits to the stormwater service fee. As you recall, over the last couple of months, we've been talking to you all about DeKalb County considering raising their rates from $48 a year to 60. We would like to follow that based on our anticipated costs of repair and maintenance of the stormwater utility program. They are meeting tomorrow and that, we understand that's on their agenda, so we'd like to defer it and come back to you once we have a better understanding of that tomorrow.
Yes, real quick, is there a, have we had any, have we been privy to the report they've been, the study they've been doing on the stormwater infrastructure?
They have provided to us, they, if they haven't, they've said that they would. Richard, I think you've received it, it's the inventory of all of the assets and the conditions of assets. Now, it's not a very thorough condition of the assets, but enough of a cursory review to say it requires more review, like maybe sending a camera down the pipe, something of that sort, but we do have that, which will enable us then to take that data and move forward to create and develop their own stormwater utility plan.
Richard, is the data in a format that we can utilize and morph if we need to and add to and?
Yes, it is, it's in GIS. We have their full GIS database.
Thank you.
Richard, I was interested in the memo you provided about your assessment of the, so we did get an evaluation of whether the high priority meant needs to be looked at immediately or within a year or?
We're going, they basically classified everything as high priority, medium priority, low priority, assuming that high priority was the stuff that needed to be addressed first, that was towards the end of its useful life, is what we made the assumption of.
Okay, so according to this memo, it says that we would assume to have, even by spending a million dollars a year to address these high priority issues, we're still looking at an eight-year backlog to get to them?
That's about, based on the anticipated revenue from even the $60 level, it's still, probably about a seven, eight-year backlog of high priority items based on what the information we were able to get from DeKalb.
How concerned are you about that?
It's about what we expected. I mean, with the age of the system, we have a stormwater system for the most part is 30 to 40 years old, a lot of corrugated metal pipe. That's what you have in the system and so it's about what we expected to see. That doesn't mean the pipes are collapsing now and the roads are collapsing. We have time to fix it, but we need to start fixing it now. We don't need to wait anymore to fix.
Did their evaluation include, I know there's technology where you can actually put a camera down the pipes and the culverts and things, did they do any of that?
Not for the pipes. I mean, they, what they did was visual inspections of the drainage structures and they did visual inspections of the pipes from the inlet and outlet points, but they did not go up the pipes at all with any cameras or, I'm assuming without sending people up there either on some of the larger pipes. So it's all based on visual from the ends of the pipes.
Does any of this, detention ponds and the conveyances, any of these involve anything at Murphy-Candler Park with the lake, with their stormwater system that they have there?
They included, they included the, the lake is included in their inventory. The lake is another asset that when we take over the parks or when the city takes over the parks, the city will be responsible for that lake. That is a stormwater thing, that is not included necessarily in these high priority. Our understanding is that they have put some money into Murphy-Candler Dam and it meets the safe dam requirement, so it is, you know, but there is going to be an annual cost or have to be reserved money every year to cover long-term costs of that dam and that lake.
And that would come with the stormwater or the parks budget?
The lake itself and the dam would probably come out of the stormwater budget.
Okay. Because it is a stormwater.
It's a stormwater conveyance, a stormwater retention, yes.
Okay.
Richard, have you had a chance to actually review many of these high priority items?
Not specifically looking at them. Carl Carver, who's our stormwater engineer, he's looking at them. Of course, we are getting calls on a lot of those right now because we, you know, when people have issues, they call us first. We are working with the county to have them at some of the more serious ones that are, where we actually have sinkholes forming, you know, getting with the county and the county is responding to fix the issues, but the ones we have looked at probably are the ones that we're getting calls about where there are actually sinkholes forming around the drainage structures.
In reading through your fee structure or the determination of the fee structure, I think if I'm doing this right, we have some inequities in our items. I'm looking at item number three on page two of the resolution. You say that the multifamily residential, one equivalent, based on the number of units times point seven.
What page are you on, Jim?
I'm on page two of the resolution, K3 in our package.
K3, page 17 of the packet, page 17?
Page 14, at the bottom. Packet page 14 at the bottom.
Alright, okay. Alright, bottom of it?
Bottom, yeah, bottom paragraph and then, so I'm going to use a project that I'm familiar with and that's the Heinz project on Dresden Drive. They've got roughly 220 units in there, times point seven is 154 residential dwelling units or residential equivalents.
Yes.
That's roughly a three-acre site using a point nine five, which is generally, you know, a three-acre site times point nine five comes out at 40 residential equivalency units. So we have a difference, if it was a commercial property, they would be paying 40 because it's a multifamily residential, they're paying 154. Somehow we need to, and we're going to see more of this as we're getting into these high-density residential properties where we're putting more units on smaller lots. I'm wondering if we may, somehow we've got a, you know, that's almost a. got a, you know, that's, that's almost a, you know, and dollar-wise, it's, you know, 3,000 or 4,000 versus 10,000 or 12,000. But somehow we need to, I think, get those numbers more in line in anticipation of some higher-density residential projects, particularly along Dresden, Peachtree, and the overlay, and possibly one day in other parts of the city. And I'm not sure where these came from. They probably came from DeKalb's ordinance.
They are DeKalb's.
But, so, yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm sure they work for a suburban, you know, for a suburban apartment complex. But if you start comparing, you know, this with an urban, then there are some inequities that I think we may need to adjust for.
I mean, we can, we can look at that. I mean, for this year, what we're looking at is just adopting basically what DeKalb has in the past as far as the, the 3,000 square feet of impervious is a residential, and then the multiplier, the multiplier effect for the multifamily, which is coming straight from DeKalb.
Yeah, and I agree with all of that.
The only thing we're looking at is modifying the, the $48 versus $60 per...
But when we get into the, into the plan, we can take a further look at that because what you're talking about is the footprint is capturing the entire parcel, and there really isn't that much impervious surface except for the building itself.
But we know that, you know, for instance, in the overlay, they've got a 20% open space requirement, so they're only at 80%, which is, you know, so, you know, so anyway, somehow, and maybe we strike that, maybe we let, I don't know, I, you know, somehow we need to, because for, for the multifamily projects to be paying, you know, almost three to one over the commercial, that doesn't seem appropriate.
I understand. Yes. We can look at that.
All right. Anything else for Richard? Is there a motion for a deferral? I think staff had recommended a deferral.
Yes.
I move we defer Resolution RES 213-06-06, consideration and approval of a resolution providing for the establishment of stormwater service fee rates and credits to the stormwater service fee until tomorrow's meeting?
Till, until tomorrow's meeting?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor of adopting the resolution as stated, or deferring the resolution as stated by Councilman Ires? Signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Court, please note that item is deferred. Other business? I don't think we have any other business. Public comments? There's another section for public comments. Trey, you want to make any public comments? Come on.
Mr. Peter is getting really hot.
That could cause infertility. I know, I've heard they've done, they've done studies on that.
Okay, moving right along.
It's a true, I've heard, it's an actual scientific study that hot laptops on labs cause infertility. Google it. Megan, do you have any announcements? Okay. All right. Public comments section is closed. Mayor's comments? Just mayor, I'd like to know the mayor is tired.
[laughing]
Along for the July weekend.
Well, I heard you had 11 children in your backyard the other day.
I did, I had 11, had 11 children. When it was raining, we had some folks over on patio, and there were 11 kids in our backyard during the rain with a hose, using our brand, you know, brand new Emerald Zoya to use as slip and slide. So that was kind of fun.
Moving right along.
All right. Jim, do you have any comments?
No.
You sure? All right. Executive session. Is there a motion for executive session?
Yes, I move we move into executive session.
Yes, to discuss matters of pending litigation. Any, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Will we be, we'll be coming out and adjourning at that point, so...
Correct.
So effectively the meeting is over?
Right, we'll be coming out and adjourning, so if you all...
You're welcome to stay, but just if...
We're not going to be coming out and doing anything. All right. All in favor of executive session? Signify so by saying aye.
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 Joe?
Yes.
All opposed? We're in executive session.